The visitors introduce themselves. So there. Where those of you who are here will be. Everybody remembers. Would ask for the drinkings. And Karen, would you start?
Can you just say your name? So, hi, I'm Brad Langs, I'm here.
Who's in? Karen, would you start?
Can you just say your name? So, hi, I'm Brad Langs, I'm here.
Who's in? Karen, that's there. About two hundred minutes.
I'm Trishy.
Say it again.
Say it again.
You know, you're.
I'm.
Let's go to the first visitor, virtually. Karen, would you introduce yourself?
Sorry, um, the sound is really, uh, you can hardly hear anything on. Online. Uh, my name is Karen Guzman Newton.
Do we just need to speak louder? Is it because of the echo?
Um, I, it, I'm not exactly sure. I couldn't hear anyone. I, Ben, I could just hear you right now, but, um, Forrest, it was really difficult to hear you and then anybody else in the room.
Okay. All right, focus on the N C agent. That can be under.
Hasn't trained food in.
My.
Hello, is that any better? Hello?
Uh, Ben, you're good?
While Ben works on the technical solution, let's ask Melissa to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Melissa Joffers.
And Carly? Are you able to hear us?
Carly, can you?
She's not even busy.
Well, she does have work. Does have to put in work. So then, uh, let's go around the table and, uh, Chris, would you introduce yourself?
Chris Wilson, number four. Um, August Grant, Economic Development Director for the county. Okay.
Megan Paul, uh, Utah State University for first of all, and as well as this.
Chris Barry, American Strategic Development Director.
Ben Alter, Economic and Economic Specialist.
Forrest Rogers, uh, Director of the Moab Museum. And your Presiding Officer today. That means I'm trying to control this chaos.
Just having a number of those words here.
So thank you all for being here while we get the technology settled to the degree possible. We're, we're obviously between this inner room and space that's unfamiliar to us. And, um, doesn't have the, um, the, uh, resources that the County Commission brought us. So we're going to do our best to make sure that people out there can hear us. We have several items to attend to at this point. Uh, the first, we've done the welcome, we've done the introductions. A request for volunteers who need to speak to conflicts of interest, disclosures, or ex parte communication. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to that. Citizens to be heard. I assume most of us are citizens. And, um, presentations, if any, and we have no presentations, at least not yet. We have a great agenda today. I just want to say a couple of things about the way this agenda has been constructed and why we're going to do today what we're going to do so we can move to the May meeting at which we need to formalize recommendations that can be presented by the board and by the, by the, uh, staff to the County Commission for Action at the June sixth Board Commission meeting. We're doing that because we have some deadlines that, um, are going to smack us in the face on June thirty. And, um, we want to help do everything we can to help the, uh, August and the team be prepared for that. And so last today is going to be providing some background information and some perspectives that we haven't, um, focused on in, in a more, we haven't focused on, we talked about a lot, but we haven't focused on. And just one other thing that's more of a procedural thing. Ben suggested, and I think it's a great suggestion, that if when we come to a vote, we'll do a roll call vote so we don't spend our time trying to figure out who's online and who's, um, voting what and when. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and you're welcome, Ben. At the end of this meeting, I'm going to take the advantage of saying a few things about Ben, um, and his service to the county because many of you know he's going to be leaving. In fact, today is your next to last day.
Next to next last day.
So this is your anti-dun ultimate. Okay. So, um, the first thing, the first item on the agenda we're going to go to is the approval of the minutes uh, from February twenty second and March twenty ninth. If you've had a chance to review them and, uh, suggest that they're acceptable, um, and approval as distributed, I would have a term motion to do that.
I make a motion to move.
Okay. So Chris and Megan?
Sure.
Okay. Good enough, okay. Then, uh, moving on to the item B on the agenda, which is the I'm sorry? Do we have to vote on those? Yes, we do. Yeah. We have a motion. It's been seconded all in favor. We're going to use the roll call vote, um, process. So we begin with Chris.
Aye.
Okay, Forrest, aye. Karen?
Aye.
We're asking you to vote.
Aye.
Okay, she's a aye. Shelly is not here. Kelly is not here. Well, Lisa?
Aye.
Chris? I, I, I'm figuring that out. Okay. But we got ayes votes from both of them.
Oh, we did. Okay. All right. Then we'll move on. So the G N I M B is the, um, prioritization of the T R T diversification of rural county grant funds. And to do that, we're going to turn to the August, August.
All right. Um, can we check something again? Yeah. Uh, Melissa, did you say something? Okay. Could you not? Did you? It doesn't matter. Did you say something again?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, uh, once more. So can anyone hear us? No, not well?
We can, I can hear you very well.
There we go, Ben. Okay. Melissa, can you hear us?
Yes. It takes a minute when someone else in the room is talking and it shifts, but yes.
Thank you. All right, um, can you open the screen share?
Uh, yeah, it should be ready.
We'll start with, uh, the diversification dollars. All right, and then I might see if I can sit in on this. Okay, um, so Chris and I, and, and, you know, Chris, if I miss anything, but, um, so obviously on the diversification side of T R T, um, with the changes to state law, um, that are going to appeal the allowable use of economic diversification activities from T R T effective July first. Um, Chris and I have been working to basically figure out how much money they're going to have available to us um, to allocate towards those uses before the allowable uses repeal. Um, and so that's a combination of actual spend in the past, forecasted spend for the rest of the year, liabilities, all the rest. Um, some of the numbers are still in play, but the important one is basically that this, this number is what our estimate is at the moment, plus or minus a couple of uncertainties. Um, Chris, can you speak to like what the range could be that you're looking at on this side of the, on the budget?
Focus though, you'd project, um, stamping costs through the end of June, um, so I would estimate that that could be a hundred thousand. So I would say between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred and fifty thousand, you know, is going to be available to spend on diversification activities prior to July one. So that's pretty significant.
Um, and that's, that's all uncovered. So S P C contribution, the second piece of the starter grant, all of that money accounted for in the liabilities call. So on, you know, we find ourselves yet again in the situation of hurry up and figure out how to spend that money effectively. And so we're going to talk about that in just a minute. Um, but I, I first want to, uh, do the same thing with the rural county grant side of things as well. Get a clear view of, uh, total funds available. A little smaller. So the original request, um, to the state is this column. So seventy five for workforce housing support, seventy five for childcare support, twenty five for the summit, and twenty five for, um, Vistap. The workforce housing support is allocated eighteen thousand already, making a balance of fifty seven grand. Um, at the last county commission meeting, the seventy five grand in childcare, um, programming, uh, has been allocated. So that's, there's nothing left to be allocated there. And then the twenty twenty five grand that was kind of slated for the summit and the Vista costs, um, Chris recommended that we pay for that out of the diversification pot. Um, and believe that basically means it frees up another fifty grand that's not allocated out of the rural county grant side of things. Um, and that could, you know, the, the probably easiest route there is to tap that on some of the workforce housing support projects. Um, but also it's not, it's not limited to that amount. Yeah, the thing that, uh, we'll chat about here, um, is the handful of workforce housing support projects that we've been proposing, um, with our community partner members that Chris has been kind of leading on. So you can speak to us about that. Um, and then separately, we kind of started to brainstorm and then working on a list of potential programs and processes for the rest of the diversification level. Uh, so I don't know if you want to start with the housing, if you want to start with the diversification stuff. I mean, it's had one more dinner.
Makes sense to start with the diversification. That's the largest amount of money that we, we have to put to good use.
Let's do that. Okay. Ben threw some slides together, but I'm gonna pull up here. Just for reference. So I think the biggest part of this. See if I can. Sure. I think the biggest piece that we're kind of thinking through here is how do we move quickly and transparently and effectively? Um, and so, you know, Chris and I, Ben and I, we've all kind of started to think about and started to source the potential projects that are evergreen, show ready in the community. Um, that'll kind of go over in the next slide, but, um, you know, I think ultimately trying to avoid it at some levels, some of, uh, um, you know, we had a lot of criticism of the starter grant program for not being transparent enough or not being, you know, head office and skeptic. So if we're going to go do this, wanting to make sure that at the very least, there's some level of like transparency and public input available to this process. Uh, as we and Ben and I were talking about, trying to figure out how do we do that in like a month? Um, and so one thing we were thinking about potentially considering, which we put on this list, is, um, you know, today go over kind of a sketch of, of kind of proposed potential options that are either in our inboxes that have budgets and proposals, um, and or kind of concepts and ideas. And doing a grant account connects kind of just a survey that says, this is what we're considering. Please provide your input and kind of say, this is good, this is bad, whatever. And then bring that to the County Commission, um, for a workshop on the sixteenth for the second May meeting, um, and have a joint kind of E D A, County Commission meeting to discuss options on the table, not recommend taking any action at that point, but to consider everything, consider the feedback from that survey. And then the next, you have a meeting on the twenty fourth, at which point, you know, the body of everybody will consider some recommendations on rural county grant and diversification and pass forward to kind of a recommended slate of proposals to be actually considered in contract form on the date of sixth, and, uh, which would give us, you know, one additional we made in June if stuff got stuck and had to take pushback. Um, I think another important thing Chris clarified the other day was in communication with state auditors that so long as, um, the, the spend or the contract is a liability on votes before the end of June thirtieth, then the checks can be had at a later date. Um, so that's, you know, obviously there's a lot of tricky, what were the actual rules, right? The state's statute of rules, but you know, we, we accrue, we don't know how much money we made in May and June until July and August. Uh, and so it's hard to actually spend that money until that date. So anyway, we did do the rule for that. Do you want to speak to that at all? That, that makes sense to everybody?
Yeah, I mean, there's a two-month administrative lag, and so the T R T is collected, doesn't get charged until two months later. And so, uh, state code requires that we operate using a modified accrual or accrual basis of accounting. And so typically, we don't worry about accruals until the end of our fiscal year, which is a calendar year. But, uh, this particular statute, H B four sixteen, is based off a state that's to be here, will change, uh, June thirty, it'll start in July first, and so I was working with our auditor on the question, you know, could we consider the T R T that comes in in, uh, July and August to be for the prior state fiscal year? Uh, and the answer was from them is yes, and it is in fact that money. Uh, which is, you know, sizable difference between not, because we accrued January and February back to twenty twenty two, the money that comes in is our bank. And if we weren't allowed to accrue, uh, to the end of the state fiscal year, then we're going to have four months with T R T. For economic diversification, I suppose, in six. So we had to work through all of those technicalities. And I think, you know, at this point anyway, um, our auditors are comfortable with us accruing that money in the program. Of course, we won't know exactly what it's ever meant to be. You know, my projections with the dollar figure we looked at are probably much larger than what it will actually be. But we run the risk of overspending if, uh, if we, you know, try to get too close to the actual projections. And so these are fairly conservative projections. You know, there could be more available, um, but we wouldn't really know because the money won't come in until after we had to commit to spending. So it's a little bit of a conundrum there. Um, but if we, you know, run off conservative projections like we are, I think it would be fine. Um, and so at this point, you know, I think it's, it's just a matter of brainstorming ideas for how we can spend that money. Probably July one. And I think that, you know, that's what this timeline is discussing, including, uh, some public feedback. And getting to the commission on June sixth, which would give us time and the commission side that they're not ready to approve it, that there'll be one more meeting after that to get it done before, uh, before July one. Um, and so we, it's a consolidated timeline, but, uh, we do have to move fairly quickly on this. Yeah. And, uh, you know, like my idea is, uh, at this point, our, our generally threefold, you know, one would be to extend our, um, involve S P D C out further. Uh, we committed to three years and we could extend that. And then that's one option that I have in mind. Uh, another is to make, uh, another contribution to the, um, community center. Is that what they call it?
Yeah, the, uh, so this is the. Together.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, and so, you know, a revolving loan fund is also a possibility here considering the amount of money. But I would think that if we went with revolving loan fund, that almost be uh, the distance where we're going to change that entire amount of money and dedicate to revolving loan fund. So Mohawk Free Health Clinic, uh, Community Resource Center, um, did some, we went over there and poured around and told them there'll be my ass money available. They were able to take a hundred thousand that they received from the starter grant and, uh, use that, um, as match money to get over a million dollars additional funding. So they're very successful with, uh, the starter grant. Uh, I think that there's what probably like at least fifteen different entities operating. Yeah. But really, uh, well, it's really well established for how young, you know, as, as a, as a project. But so I'm, I'm pretty impressed with that. I think you'd be safe, but you're invested in that as well. You want to cover some of the other ones?
Yeah, quickly flag Melissa's question. Yeah, uh, Melissa, do you want me to react to your question or do you want to just ask for a quick?
Sorry, I just have a list. Um, you know what? It doesn't matter. You can read them off or I can ask and then I have one more based on this slide, but I can hold it to after.
No, that's fine. I'll just read what you've been chatting. So we're wondering, um, you know, how much later can the checks be cut after the liabilities occurred? You have a opinion?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, we typically would never accrue anything past, uh, February twenty four of the prior year. So there's pretty much a cutoff for accruals, um, for twenty twenty three, which is going to be, you know, the end of February, February twenty twenty four. So that's when we stop occurring, occurring a lot by accrual basis.
So doing the latest possible potential time that we've had checking.
Yeah, if it's after February of twenty twenty four, then it's going to go until April.
Got it. And the other question was, uh, where the diversifications funds go if they're not spent? Uh, towards the one question. Yeah, Melissa, if you had any other questions, go for it.
No, I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the answer to that one. So where do they revert if they aren't spent? Do they stay with the county or does it go to?
It goes to the tourism promotion, uh, budget.
Got it. Okay. I'm with you now. Perfect.
It stays in the county.
Got it. Okay.
So, yeah, I may always stay with this, but, um, the, the representation activities provision is being repealed. So it won't even be an option. Um, the way that the statute reads right now, um, up to one fifth of the money that goes to economic development can be spent on recreation, build organizations. And the remainder has to go towards tourism promotion. So the four parts of the budget will be tourism promotion. One fifth will be recreational events. After July one.
After July. Okay, so, um, with that in mind, I think what would be useful for this conversation is a discussion. I can maybe go over some of the things on here. On that we've, that we've already discussed. And, um, I think the, the goal of this would be so that by the end of the week, um, our team can put together kind of a community service, because these are kind of a sketch of the types of programs we'd be considering, funding, we have a tight turnaround, we want your input on, you know, write things that look good to you and suggest things that wouldn't be useful for you, um, if we don't already, you know, have a lot less, then there would still be opportunity for input at that workshop, uh, in May. Uh, so I'll go over this and I think what would be good is if we could just kind of go around and, and kind of pop for some suggestions and, you know, for, you know, everybody's got some good ideas. So, so some things on here, obviously, I think the rotating one fund is, you know, can kind of still got any remaining bonds, um. It's not something where a certain amount buys a certain amount. The more there's areas, the more that gets kind of in the rotating one fund in perpetuity. It would then cycle through and have just be administered by an association of governments. They said that they'd be willing to happen to do that. And, um, would be restricted to our businesses from the county. Uh, so it's not, not a bad idea, but, um, there, there's a certain amount of, yeah, negative cost would be more viable to be one for the A O G. And having seen that program work, uh, it is still, right? So it's still helping with all of the processing and repaying obligation and collateral and then can get somewhat messy sometimes. Um, so the, the other piece here, this one, um, is that Ben was basically supposed to be promoting it January, um, but it was positive to be, um, uh, the old process was sixteen, and so, um, that never happened. So there was a consideration of potential, you know, um, back promotion of that, of that, uh, additional funding of what he would have received if this hadn't happened. Um, the Mohawk Free Health Clinic Resource Center project, um, they proposed, uh, about five hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that they did choose from. Um, including, uh, some facilities improvements and including some space for the Department of Workforce Services and the Korean Technical Education Services that U S U Mohawk provides. Uh, some initial work that would drive a housing complex that they're trying to put on that property and additional infrastructure improvements. Um, Ben, you put on the Wildcat Micro Fund. It wasn't there. I know we talked, we had a talk before the. Yeah, when I was doing the meeting minutes for one of our last meetings, um, this came up when Shelly was discussing the Chamber of Commerce's idea to uh, empower local students through business pitch competitions. And then Megan brought up the micro fund and talked about how that could kind of augment that or be a similar program that achieves that name. So again, I don't know. Do you want to talk a bit about the micro fund? Um, I know we talked about it before, but maybe like a refresher as well. How much do you think it would take to implement it and like, oh, we need great money?
So the Wildcat Micro Fund is a, um, it's essentially Steve money, but we can work with businesses of the five years that are making more than five thousand dollars a month in net revenue, which opens up a lot of opportunity. Um, we work with them. We create a what's called a business canvas model, which is similar to a business plan. Why is it extensive? But we look at other areas of business or other areas of business that you don't necessarily need in a business plan. And then, um, we, uh, create a pitch deck with them and then they go and they pitch. They're only competing against themselves. So if they don't score high enough to get the money, they'll get the comments from the judges. They'll come back. They'll fix whatever um, items that they have and they can go back and re-pitch to get their money. They can ask for up to three thousand dollars at a time. They do have to have a budget for that, just like in the regular business plan. Um, and they can go back and pitch. Right now it's set at three times. Uh, we could have talked about maybe moving that to up to five times in our rural and suburban areas, which granted, I would be considered in that. Um, and so they can get anywhere from nine and fifteen thousand dollars, um, on a, on a grant basis. So they wouldn't have to pay it back. Startup fund, um, or moving them onto that next level, basically to make them bankable so they can move into those other sources of funding after that. They have enough going to be able to do that. In order to get that going, I would need at least another contact business consultant um, to add. The, the second I release that this has launched, it's going to get scary. I've already got fifty businesses on my waitlist. So it's, I need another part-time person to be able to, to fill that need. So it was about thirty to forty thousand. So it was about thirty to forty thousand to bring another part-time, another ten to everything.
So you don't need money for the fund itself.
No, we have, yeah, we have one point two million dollars that we got donated from America First. We just have to do, figure out the administration of that.
Great. Good. Thank you. Um, I threw on here um some kind of state investment or whatever that would go forward. It's a long-term kind of mixed use or uh commercial space development of some kind. If there's a good deal out there that could be potential purchase.
Be a new one.
Or or a public, private, mass, whatever, just throwing it out there. Um, I think there's need for a commissary kitchen in our community that we brought up a lot. Um, so if that's like, if someone has a shovel-ready project or that they're ready to go, that's a potential kind of way forwards. If anybody is kind of helping commercial space, these are two products that I worked through the great mind and are mixed use potential consideration for development. Um just kind of hearing the great minds of, you know, if there's something, there's a project that we're just not aware of that additional capital could make happen. Um, that's another thought, but that this is kind of our initial path. So I think I'd open it up. Anybody's input, what are we gonna say? What could be added for this list? Questions? Ben's gonna be thinking.
I can add something. Um, I was gonna bring up the kitchen for sure, because then there's a lot of small businesses who would avoid rentless space to do the commercial kitchen stuff. Um, and then I just had an opportunity to participate in a cohort for women business owners through the SBA with the Ascend Pilot Program. And um the the Business Development Center in New Mexico has this space that is not only a coworking space, but also has space where people can go in and like record their um advertising. So like a space where people could go and film for their commercials or for their, you know, their their marketing. Yeah, which was a really cool idea and maybe a space that you
Oh, yeah, that's awesome. And that's what we we modeled our Spark Center out of after.
Right, yeah. So I would say anything that could add to our small business development center would be good.
A coworking space, a commercial kitchen, those two things would have not so good a impact on the business that I'm working with right now. Um, and to be able, so those two are the ones that seem to me. Funding for the Wildcat Fund, that is, that's more economical, you have a little utility back. Um, so that would be really, really great. Um, but I also know you guys just give us funding for a full-time person here, um, which is a little pen job, as it is. So um, but those are the ones that seem to me.
You guys, wasn't there, um, supposed to be a space at the new university, a kitchen space? Did that?
There is. Yeah, there's a very nice kitchen.
So is it possible to, I don't know, I you know, somehow work in tandem with somebody else who actually has?
Yeah, there's a very nice kitchen. I I don't know you, you would see intimately, but um a very nice kitchen, a very nice sewing room, like I have a whole
That's all on the extension in part.
Yeah, it's separate from the R V S U.
Right.
Is that available for that kind of use?
I don't think it is.
That's production.
I think that that, yeah, that's part of the extension. So, yeah.
So can the um these funds be allocated to county departments? For any of these purposes, specifically, I'm thinking of the commissary kitchen because the the grand center has what is effectively a commercial kitchen.
Right.
And and yet they could always use upgrades there. Um, that is the low-cost venue for most organizations downtown who don't have a hoodoo or some other place supporting them. Their projector doesn't work. You know, there are lots of ways you could make the grand center a more useful space for people. Um, and meet some of the needs of the commissary kitchen um interest on on the part of you.
I don't know, I've never given up for the grand center, but as you're talking about that, um, I've looked at the E D A grant for incubator space. There's an incubator one and there's also what's called a university center. Um, so there's two um picking up. But in to bring those two together, there are really five of those grants. And I know based on the, because I was at a conference two weeks ago, they got extra money that they needed. So this could be batch money for that.
I mean, I haven't even looked into that. I mean, my preference would be to um apply this funding as directly to local businesses as possible. So I would tend to not wanna spend it internally in any way or minimize internal expenditures.
I, you know, they're having the ability to actually use a space to to come up with products, which is a direct link to helping local businesses. So, I mean, if it seems like we can figure out some sort of partnership and if it's you know, through the university or through, you know, the grand center, I mean, this is, it's already done. I mean, why wouldn't we, I don't know, try to help those businesses that Megan is, you know, trying to to get off the ground?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that the venue itself is kind of, these both of those venues present a lot of conflict. It's certainly engaging and to integrate them with the binary used to render that they happen. So, I mean, if we could find some standalone venue, then I think it would be better.
I have a question. Sorry, just to, just to piggyback on what Karen was suggesting, I would be curious to hear what the conflicts are. Because I think one thing to keep in mind is, and if USU has a facility that we could use as a commissary kitchen, or if the grand center has one that could be leveraged as a commissary kitchen. I feel like in order to be effective, there's an add-on on top of the facility. So for example, who can we bring in to talk about what are the requirements for bottling with food and beverage? Marketing for food and beverage? How do we provide that additional support on top? And then how do you market and advertise to the community so that they know that those resources are available and that they can utilize those? So there's a whole business plan involved beyond just saying, hey, we need a mop sink and a clean sink and here are the different things that we need in order for that to qualify or to be able to pass an inspection as a commissary kitchen. I'm really liking the idea of what Megan was talking about earlier with her fifty businesses in the backlog of being able to help them all the way through the process of, hey, I have an idea for a food and beverage business. It can be profitable. That's gonna create an asset for the community. And then to be able to help them all the way through that process, but not expending on another two ovens if we already have some that we can use or a large commercial refrigerator that's gonna meet all of those commissary requirements. So I'm, I would be curious about, number one, what would be available at both the grand center and USU to be able to use as a commissary kitchen as part of an incubator or an accelerator food and beverage program? And then how I combat those conflicts? And then also, do we have a business planner? We put a plan together to be able to say, and here are all of the other resources because it it's gonna go beyond just space for them to be able to do that as a business, right? We're gonna have to be able to help them with licensing requirements and, you know, sanitation requirements and then marketing support and all of those things. I would love to see some kind of a comprehensive plan around that. I think that'd be great.
I think a lot of people are already existing businesses too that are asking for this space. They already have a plan. They're doing the business. They just need a place to use.
Also, for as far as like the safety and everything like that, Utah State actually is the one that holds the licensing and things like that to do certifications. And so that would follow it or Utah State anyway. Um, whether that happens at one of our extension offices or out of Logan, um, we have all of that in place currently. Um, I did, um, I started with Grant um a year ago to do like a food hub, um, brought all of those pieces together. And so that's just a matter of of finalizing and bringing that, but that followed with nice. I also have a full plan for an incubator kitchen and commercial kitchen, um, which required, uh, because I've been looking at what one of those is since I moved down here three years ago, so.
And I love that. There are really great models in place for that spice kitchen in Salt Lake. It's a perfect example of how they take them all the way through commissary kitchen, like you were saying, with existing businesses. All the way to supporting them with food trucks. And I feel like that's where that rotating one loan fund also comes in handy. Is being able to help support them all the way through the process. I really like that.
So, again, talking about like, well, if we don't do the revolving loan fund right now, there is a grant called ARMA through USDA. It's never been done in Utah, never been looked at. Um, I talked to them two months ago. They would love to bring that to Utah. So that is an opportunity that once they have all the infrastructure in place to back it, we can go after that and back that with something like the ARMA that is in place for this for us.
Love that.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna suggest that we put the lid on that can of worms that we opened up, because there's some great ideas there. And obviously, this has generated a lot of, a lot more ideas or some response to these ideas. If you wanna distribute this sometime in the next week, send your target, uh, or that's your
The goal would be to finalize some kind of communication as community input process by the end of the week and launch that on Monday. So what we want is to have the bucket of, here's what we're already considering. Take a look at what we're considering and, you know, show us your preferences and in the other blank box tells what it is. Um, and so we, I think if you, if you, I mean, I'd be open to having uh, you know, just make sure that we're not missing any new ideas in this room and then, you know, send us in a box.
Okay, well, is it possible then if people, having seen this with, having discussed it, can uh respond to you, say by the end of the day tomorrow, if they have additional ideas?
Sure.
I don't know what's possible with the time that we have, if it would even be possible, but for me, the list isn't as helpful as understanding what's behind the list and what the plan for it would be. So like, for example, with the Moab Free Resource Center, the list is great and I can see a lot of things, but without seeing what the actual plan is, it's difficult to see what impact that would have on diversification. Does that make sense? So I don't know how possible it would be to see their plans.
Yeah, would you have a slightly, like a back, you know, a spreadsheet that has a proposal attached to it for that particular piece and we can distribute that? I think the intention for now is to, you know, basically create a menu on, get input on that menu and then have more detailed input at the May sixteenth workshop or commission meeting. Is that makes sense? So I think that this is an initial review, not a final statement of preference, if that makes sense.
But as Melissa said, this is what would be distributed, correct, without much more context.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll put as much flesh on skeleton as we have.
Okay, so we'll do our best and I think we can distribute it.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have two weeks, effectively two weeks to
Continue to give proposals and stuff.
Yeah. That makes sense for everybody. Um, is there another part of this?
Not next, next to me, looking at the housing programs, grow any grant.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you. That is a really um varied and diverse list of ideas and options. And uh I can see supporting almost any one of those. So.
Um, Ben, you wanna pull up the proposal and then create a BTO? I believe throughout that, I was actually not sure if it's been.
Yeah, well, Caitlin was, Caitlin just joined us. So I think Chris, I think it sounds like you're probably already just pick us off and you can just ask for support from Caitlin.
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Um, I've got this sheet pulled up here. Just let me know where you want me to scroll on that.
Okay. Um, yes, I mean, I think August got us started in terms of what the finances look like. Um, I don't think that we need to do background. I think we all know why workforce housing matters to uh Grand County. Um, so it looks like, I mean, we have somewhere between fifty seven thousand to maybe a hundred and seven thousand, depending on how some of those other items get moved to TRT funding within just the Royal Crown Grant Program that could be that, you know, could go towards workforce housing, but a minimum of fifty seven thousand. And this is all by the end of June also. So the idea here is to have some discussion around what some of the priorities are and talk about what some of the proposals that are out there are. So that we are ready to sort of vote on things as uh they're following me to the next month. There's really three things that came through, you know, when Ben and I sat down, we we spoke with Caitlin and the Land Trust. Uh, I had another conversation with Ben Riley of Haku and we were sort of whittled things down to three basic proposals. Um, three, three sort of buckets of of items. And so you'll see on the sheet are four, and I'm gonna combine two of those um as we sort of walk through them. So I'm gonna just run through them very briefly and then daddy has opened us up to have some discussion. The first one is to help get voluntary primary residents or workforce housing a deed restriction of a program for them stood up. So Haku's already had someone, one person in town come to them and say, we'd like to de-restrict our home for primary residents so that a local gets this house in perpetuity. Um, and they helped do that, but very good strategy. Like, they they didn't have really the legal support and framework in place to to do that on an ongoing basis. Um, but with some funding, they could. Uh, and there are other people in town who would do it simply on a voluntary basis. In Vale, there's a program where they're actually incentivizing people to de-restrict in that way. So they're saying, what's the value of your home on the market without a deed restriction? What's the value of your home on the market with deed restriction and helping make up some of that gap? Right? So that's something that to think about that we could all sort of, you know, maybe it's something that there are people would like to do in Grand County, would like to in the future. But what could be done now would be to take advantage of people who would do it voluntarily and what's needed is sign the program, lawyer, contract, uh, maybe some. Um, so that's one. That's probably about fifty thousand. Second one is impact the offsets for workforce housing developments. Uh, I think we've identified the new uh E D O, the alternative way, play camps sites as a particularly good use of this type of funding. And that's because, so those are like these camp sites that now we developed, um, this new overlay for more and more schools. They have some infrastructure at them, like bathrooms, for example. Um, in getting those, they have to pay impact fees. Impact fees, which is for like water and sewer, are larger as portion of the overall possible projects for those types of projects than for traditional developments. Um, so we could make a big difference by having offset some of that to make projects feasible that wouldn't otherwise be to get some housing. Um, that is something that, you know, the impact fees are five or so thousand dollars per project. Um, so however, you know, however many multiples of five thousand dollars we put in a bucket, that's how many developments we need to support it. Um, so it's sort of flexible number associated with that one. Uh, and the third bucket is um supporting community infrastructure at Arroyo Crossing, horizontal infrastructure. Um, so this is, you know, Arroyo, which is held by the Community Land Trust. There are lots of different types of development happening there. This would specifically be for the town home portion of Arroyo. Um, and they received some funding through the community block grant uh to help cover some of those costs, but could use additional support. Um, and this is another one. It's it's sort of a flexible number because there's a total cost, but we're we're not gonna cover the total cost. So we would just be helping them get towards closer to the total amount for it's, you know, water, sewer, telecom, electric. Um, that would all be poor homes that are poor works, specifically de-restricted for workforce. I'm combining, let me just say why I'm making it three rather than four after my conversation with Ben rather than from Haku last night. Um, the affordable housing research, which is on here, really decided Um, the affordable housing research, which is on here, really decided that they are ready. You know, if there was funding, they could create the program rather than just search the program. Um, and so that's why the one on the front, that's the pilot about the de-restriction program would be the, the sort of the priority of those two.
Yep.
So let me stop there and I think the idea is open for conversation.
And, and Shelly just asked, so everyone should have access to this document. If you go to the um, invitation on your calendar, there's a link to access the agenda. And then this is an attachment with the item we're on right now, which is item B. So this is not in county.
Sorry.
So I had a question about like, do we know how many um, projects might already be ready to use the um. The incentive for the impact fees?
No, I think is the, the short answer. We don't know for sure, but. One thing I did get from, I mean, maybe you have some info on this because at least that, actually the commission's going to be considering approval of. Several sites that are coming.
Yeah, there, I want to say four projects that are going to be either approved or denied, I think, continuing. Um, and the pilot program itself is a hundred fifty sites. Um, and about two thirds of them have passed the first intent to apply round and there's going to be another intent to apply period. After the first batch applicants are approved at the next meeting. Um, so in general, it'll be a hundred fifty sites for people with trailers or. That's the thing.
So I'm not sure where New Orleans Grand County already has a policy of waiving impact fees for affordable housing projects?
This would be for Gwissa in Canada.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. This is mostly for Gwissa.
And so that would be, when you say five thousand per development, you're talking very, very individually here.
That's probably, that's just a number I saw on a sheet.
Yeah, I mean, technically, I'm not going to, they're going to stub in uh, water and sewer, you know, or provide water and sewer. I'm not sure how they calculate it. A D U or A D O type thing. Um, it's probably not a full E R U. But typically like you, we assess says impact fees for one year, you're going to be over six thousand.
Yeah.
And there are some developments. I mean, they range between like eight sites to like thirty five sites. So um, for certain developers who try to, we said ten to thousands of dollars in impact. For those that specifically.
Sure. So yeah, I mean, I'm not sure. I would be, I would like to connect now. Do we assess say we charge for these videos individually?
If it's per site or if it's like some number of E R U per.
Yeah, I mean, they, they'll probably have a calculation, you know, a fractional E R U per site.
Yeah, I think they have these, like these costs already calculated out for the applicants who will be approved or denied at the next commission meeting. I don't know what they are.
But there's applicants now, where they already assume they're going to be paying these. Yeah. So with doing this, opening it up to applicants who maybe wouldn't otherwise do it.
Well, the time frame for that is pretty much over, isn't it?
Well, there's another tend to apply period that.
I'm going to say it's mid-May, so yeah, we hope it.
We have, we got a lot of feedback on this at the housing series workshop. I can't remember when it was, um, from developers who were saying that this is going to be potentially a significant cost that they keep them second guest applying.
For just uh, like from what I've heard in our office, a lot of people who pass the original intent to apply period. Um, for the EDO, they then did a lot of the homework about how much impact these are going to cost and they were toward that. And there are some people that are like, I don't know if I can make this work out.
Right. It's like, yeah, the policy that they cannot.
Yeah.
Uh, so rather than like asking them to wait, they're paying them, it would be a grant to offset that.
I mean, you have to realize the impact is a calculated on actual cost of buying the service. And so if they get away, somebody else is going to have to pay.
Right.
Exactly.
That's a, and so that's why I mean, programming business is important because you know, because they don't have a big revenue or, you know, you know, big restart or to dip into this.
Right. If you wait a while, then everybody else.
But it would surprise me if we're looking at five thousand dollars per site.
Right.
Yeah. And that's just for the impact fee. That's not including the cost of actually building the site. So yeah, it can be pretty expensive. So August, you were saying that you've heard from developers through these round tables that this might be. And then this might be an incentive or this might reduce a barrier.
I think it's, I think, yeah, I think for people who are all on board with this concept, as, as Noel's pointing out, are kind of being. Blindsided by this cost, you know, that's making them, it's impacting these building projects.
And all reviews cost, there aren't really like payment plans, which it has to be a rent cost before they have a challenge that they own of renting out the site. So it can be hard for locals who are trying to make this kind of a group that costs.
I don't mean to play the devil's advocate here, but on the other side of things, I then wonder if. If they can't afford that, are they going to be able to afford? Like the upkeep that we want so that these don't start like trap shaking, like, I mean, this is a form of development that gives them income. Do I just, on, on the other side, like it does concern me for us to grant them. Pretty much a lot of hard portion of the cost to develop this. And then it's like, okay, are you going to manage your money well and make sure that you take care of the rental properties? Properly? I, I don't know. It just, I think part of building development is that you have to find the money, you have to be financially secure to do that and where to have this business. And so that, that was my interest that I get inside of things.
And I think he's mentioned that, I think, I think, I think that there's definitely a possibility that's a good product, but I think that also has.
Even some skin game.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we're, if we're talking maybe giving like fifty thousand dollars, now we're talking about only ten. Minutes too. So what's our then?
Uh, to, to Shelly's point, I also, you guys, I'm sorry because I, it's kind of hard to um, hear the conversation. But are these individual, like local individuals, or is, are these developers trying to do multiple sites? I couldn't understand that. Like the ones that are in the queue right now.
Yeah, these are local property owners who are putting in between four and forty sites on their own property. They're not like. Outside developers who are coming in.
Karen, did you hear that response from Noel?
I, I didn't hear Chris at all. What did Chris say?
I just say one of the bigger ones, pack rate development, the owner doesn't live here. But I, I don't know if that's consequential. I mean, it is providing local options for uh, workforce housing. I don't know whether we can worry about whether it's locally owned or not myself.
Right. I just think we need to make sure we have that maybe we have them what's given me and how, how they apply to this really big, like a forty unit property to me like. As development, that is not just trying to solve workforce housing problem. That to me is they should have the income. So at what point do we go? Oh, we're going to help this person, but we're not going to help this person. We have a point this, this buyback like.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I guess I, I would say that. There is a market failure right now. Like the market on its own is not providing sufficient workforce housing. So there, there is a need to intervene somehow and make it more affordable, make it more feasible for people to build these projects. Now, that doesn't mean that you make it free for two people and everybody else pays for price or whatever. I agree with your concerns there. Uh, but I'm not personally concerned with the idea of subsidizing workforce housing either. Because there's, you know, we're addressing a problem that's clearly out there in the community.
I just don't want us to solve one problem and add it anymore. Like, what does this look like? I think we need to just make sure we have the right idea of what it looks like.
Mary?
If you weigh the fees and, you know, so that these small property owners. Um, developers can get their project underway and start turning it into an income source for them. Could we have something in the agreement that, that they eventually pay that? Somebody who will weigh these fees.
But when you're. Rotating workforce housing.
That's a great idea, Mary.
Other thoughts? If none, this has been a great discussion. Chris, thanks for setting this up for us and introducing from four to three, the, the number of considerations. Um, as we move, look towards our next meeting, it makes sense then for um. If you will, Chris, to, to collapse these three, these four into three. And um, the suggestion that Mary uh, put forward was well responded to. So maybe. I don't know. Is this something that uh, no longer Ben um, crafted for us or is that something August that you can work with?
Yeah. So I, 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 what I, what I would hear and respond to is I would want to ask. You know, the AOG, I mean, they do have a real program. So. Could they do it if it's not a business development, but that's for like workforce housing at this time? So I'd be happy to explore that concept if they can administer it. Um, and then we could make a contribution, whatever we can make and then have it. So I would do that for sure.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you. Any final thoughts or comments?
So I think that for the next meeting, we want to have collected proposals with costs associated for actual recommendation.
Yeah. Exactly. Moving on to the next agenda item, it's the review of the economic development strategic plan and. Uh, the RFP, yeah, well.
We don't have a plan yet. And we are not doing the planning today. That ended up being a. It didn't make a point.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Brian is here representing the travel council and, and Vega is um, also on the travel council and. August had a chance to talk about this process with, at the last travel council advisory board meeting. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And um, Brian and Vega, I don't want to put you on the spot. Jim was going to try to be here to. Um, provide th- this group with some feedback from that discussion. Um, recognizing it was two and a half weeks ago. Um, I have some recollection.
Brian here.
Yeah, I mean, I just see.
One of the one is the obviously they just support you guys however you can. Um, and to that, if we have a stake in the direction that this board votes on, it would most likely be towards uh, workforce development, housing. Um, that seemed to be the general consensus for everyone that they would favor. Um, as well as um, Jenny went to make it clear as well that there's a lot of discussion. Also started around the RFP that was going to be sent out. And the polling citizens and I think the board as well just went into voice that any kind of. Anything that's going to be sent out to the general public or collection that we put more weight on your round residence. Rather than residents that are only here, maybe wants to waste some money. Uh, or just on three or four vacation properties. And if there's a way to devise that, that's how that feedback would be collected.
Yeah, or no restriction.
So um, I, I can maybe before we get into this kind of exercise of reviewing some of the component of the RFP update on how it's going. So it was, it was public. Um, thank you to everybody's prompt feedback on the contents of it. Um, and the timeline is that it'll be open for a month, um, closing on the twelfth. Um, the scoring committee, which consists of the economic development board chair, uh, Tim, I think you're deferring on that.
I am, and Melissa has agreed to sit in on that.
Yeah. So no one, if everybody's okay with that, Melissa is going to represent the economic development board as scoring committee, unless anybody else is particularly excited about that and wants to fight Melissa about that. Uh, and then Jenny is related, the travel council board is sitting on that scoring committee, myself. Uh, and Chris and Bill in the county are going to score those proposals. Uh, and then the, the weeks of fifteen to the nineteenth to the twenty second to the twenty sixth is going to be reviewing, interviewing. And verifying proposals to try to get to a uh, a petition and getting the contract in ready for consideration at the June sixth commission meeting. So of all of these processes are parallel in many ways. Um, and that's too important as a fair amount of the funds that are going to support that project are coming from this diversification, the extent of evaporating. Um, I have been very encouraged by the response that I've gotten from. Uh, I've been kind of gathering a list of vendors over the last year and a half that does this work, um, from colleagues and from conferences and. Send them to about sixty five uh, contacts and have schedule, schedules of office hours as we can last, basically clarify. The proposal uh, process, the main respected applicants and sat down about six firms over the last two weeks. Um, that had really, really good input on some having kind of a more background of tourism development, destination development background, really understanding tourism leagues and some kind of. Or traditional industry, industry, industrial recruitment, economic development background. Uh, and I think that a good outcome is going to be both that's grounded in the reality of people who have a grounded, who people who are grounded experiencing what it's like to mitigate it. Um, and advise on those backgrounds. So I feel really good about potential vendors who are going to be bidding on this and um. Uh, from a timing perspective, um, once the contract is approved, then they give that this process start in July. Um, to go for about eight months and then kind of wrap up and tie it to their end summit in February, March of next year for kickoff. And, you know, I feel a little hard for the house, of course, in a lot of ways to be having this conversation about how do we spend a season of dollars. But you know, it's the constraints that we have and the goal would be that this process. Gets us to a place where we have a grounded understanding of where we're going as a community, as a mission, as a department, from everything, course of promotion, marketing. You know, responsible recreation, sustainable quality of life, holistic, you know, housing, workforce, childcare, all that, that helps everybody. And kind of the diversification priorities, uh, and that all in one place and not kind of competing with each other at the heart rate. So I'm encouraged. I think we're in the right direction there. Um, and. I guess any questions within the context of the process? I know Forrest wanted to dive in a little bit. Into uh, some of the sections of that, that we will be involved in when that process kicks off and get answered on that, but. Does the process make sense to everybody?
It's a kind of a process.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We're, you know, buying, buying trust and going forward.
Brian, thanks for your um, summary of the feedback from the travel council. Uh, the other thing that I noted was a desire to get moving, even at this time of year to just. You know, this plan through nobody's fault has been discussed for.
Well, the, the economic development advisory council recommended it as the number one to do for a station dollars in December twenty one. So it's been a priority.
Well, we're not going to go down the drain. Well, we're not going to go down the drain, we're going to drive up. So we had a full, a fulsome discussion at our last meeting, about what economic development means to us and what economic diversification means to us. We have the raw comments that is, say the raw text from the comments that everybody, it's made, expressed, and I took the liberty of just developing a summary of the key points. And did that before we knew that we were going to be starting into this planning process. So it occurred to me that this would be a good time for people to review the RFP. And note two things especially, the first is that, the language that has been crafted suggests that the consultant is actually a neutral facilitator. And somebody who has some background in tourism-related and economic development, community building activities. But it's not necessarily being engaged to just develop, deliver to us their expertise, having worked in other places that aren't Moab. And so I thought that was really important to reinforce. And in that paragraph, the statement that the expectation is that they will rely on whoever is selected will rely on the expertise, of people in the community, people on this board, the travel council, the people in the community. We should not overlook the, the people who are involved with this community, but beyond it, like the state tourism department, the governor's office of economic development, small, small business development centers, and others who can help inform this process. So in the packet was distributed, the front page of the RFP. And the second page was an area that I thought was specifically important to us. This was in the very first draft that I saw of this document. Where the expectation was that the consultant would implement a plan, to define our objectives, our strategies, our vision and mission. And my response, when I first saw that was, wait a minute, that's not a consultant's job. The department already has some definitions of economic development. With some very specific qualities or criteria, but not necessarily goals. Or longer term measurable vision and mission. It seemed to me, again, after the fact, that the conversation we had at our last meeting, actually surfaced a lot of the ideas that meet this particular section of the RFP. In other words, this is work that we started to do with articulating a vision statement, articulating a mission statement, and more importantly, articulating what we want the community to look like and feel like. And that's what was, that's in what we distributed to everyone after that meeting. So it seemed to me that our next step would be to discuss how we can start working on that. Taking what we've discussed before and starting to frame that into a recommendation to the county commission, to articulate that, to, to approve and articulate a vision for the community we're trying to build. And the economic infrastructure for that, and put some specific goals, both longer term and near term to that. And that's a working conversation process. We have lots of ideas, we have people from the travel council who can help inform that. And to sort of set the tone, because of Melissa's response to the RFP, when August submitted it, I thought I would ask her if she would speak a little bit to two things that she said specifically. One was moving from sustainable tourism to a different term. Sustainable tourism is now the buzzword in the trip, in the travel and tour industry. And nobody really can define it. I shouldn't say that, consultants can define that for you. But we have to figure out what that means for us here. And the other is a very simple description of the process that we, we use. And so I'm going to ask Melissa to give us a five to ten minute, background on that approach, and then we're going to open it up for a discussion about how we move forward. It may mean that we're going to be asking people to work between this meeting and the main meeting to help craft some of these statements, and put together the language we want to present, present to the county commission as we, as we move forward. Does that make sense?
So are you talking about this outside the context of the planning project?
No.
So typically, the consultants will come in and establish a stable working group, which would include this board, travel council board, and mission areas, et cetera. And then, you know, those folks that work together on what exactly what you're talking about. So I'm just wondering, are you talking about doing this within the context of that, by that, procurement of this planning process or, or separately?
Not separately, but this, I think, is what sets up how we approach. What we're looking for, the steering committee to, to look at, what the, the people who are selecting, the contractor to look at. And it gets us all using the same language.
All right, so yeah, I would just, I guess I would just, you know, warn again, it's like, having just this group do that by themselves, but outside the context of what's going to be a larger group of people. Like we will, this group will be a part of this undoubtedly. But so will the travel council budget board, and so we're, you know, with the county commission, maybe, you know, planning commission. So I'm just, I'm just saying like, if you're going to do this, it might, it might be wise to wait until we pull that, that larger group together and establish the ground rules for how everybody's planning. On the, on the, on developing the plan. And, you know, given the amount of money we're spending, it should be a fairly extensive process. It's, it's a similar price tag to our channel plan updates, which are very extensive and last for up to a year. And oftentimes include several staff members from the consulting agency, not just a single consultant. You know, we're talking about a fifty thousand dollar plan, and they better have a whole team of people working for us.
That's significantly more than what we were going to be spending, so.
So this is going to be, yeah, we're going to have an entire team of planning professionals working on this with us. Yeah, and then we also are the vista that we'd be hiring. We've heard their job description to be adding kind of on the ground capacity to facilitate this stuff instead of meetings engaging. Their communities in this process. We'll have that in-house capacity to be coordinating, and I'll be doing all this well, but it's not my only job. But yeah. So typically, when these proposals come back, they'll outline how they envision the whole process unfolding. And that will be a part of the selection process that we have to decide, you know, whose, whose process do we agree with.
So would it be effective to have a representative of the board that makes sure that they go to all those meetings or committing from this board?
Again, I mean, we're pretty early in trying to even talk about this right now without seeing any of the proposals come back to us yet. In the past with the general plan, for instance, you know, some of these working groups have been really large, like thirty people or more, all sitting in a room together. You know, working through a lot of this stuff, which can be cumbersome, but you know, with these big planning processes, that's sort of how it, how it oftentimes unfolds. And so, I would, I would envision that, you know, potentially the full economic development advisory board, the full travel council advisory board might be. Yeah, that's definitely cool. And I think, you know, in addition, one of the lot of conversations we've been having with the posers, potential vendors, is trying to figure out, you know, we're islanding, how can these dollars be most effectively used, so we're not wasting much of your time traveling? You know, how can we do as much of this meeting kind of remotely with staff, having someone here in the, the donkey or banana facilitator, program manager, being specialists. So, you know, really trying to maximize engagement and ensure that, like, we're meeting the various stakeholders in our economy where they're at. Whether it's, you know, in our neighborhood or, you know, in our region. Not necessarily saying this is going to be one meeting at the mark, if you missed it, because you didn't have a babysitter, and then you're going to have to stay in the future economy. So I did my, I guess what I was absorbing was these kind of thoughts and comments. I think my understanding where Forrest wanted to go with this was, let's review kind of the conversation from the last time. And, you know, just grab ourselves in that perspective going into this process as we're going to kind of seek, look at our proposals and go through this process from there. And then, you know, for, for some of this, I should say, the implementation plan, and not the implementation, but, the outcome and deliverable of this process says, here is the five-year plan of actual implementation that the staff will go to. And I think when we're initially talking about this, and potentially talking about this is like, what could staff and board do more of if we had, less capacity on the planning standpoint, would be, okay, let's, let's, let's hammer out a vicious statement, vicious statement, and some of these objectives. So, but I guess with that among Chris's comments, I'm not sure that would. Well, I mean, that would be one of their primary to spread out those, develop those things.
But you're saying that it would be their job to help us develop our goals, our vision and mission?
Just, yeah, I mean, as facilitators. Or as facilitators. Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think the, the goal is, they're not telling us what to do, they're capturing, they're hearing everything that the community said. The various venues that we're hosting, listening to interviews, stakeholder games, et cetera, and stimulating that into, this is what we heard. And lending an expertise that this is, you know, what we hear anyone. Yeah, and like I said, with a hundred fifty thousand dollar price tag, we shouldn't, I don't think that we should be worried about any pension. Yeah. You know, they should, whoever, you know, we will probably get a lot of proposals because there's a lot of firms that do this kind of work. And so I think when you, you know, see the proposals come in, they'll probably be very substitute. Yeah, and I'm really excited. Yeah, and I think they're, they should bring a lot of resources to the table.
Well, I'm hoping it gives us as a factory where a really clear vision of what we're.
Well, yeah, and a lot of, you know, it's still going to come down to everybody that's involved at the local level, actually crystallizing that vision. And they can assist with that, but yeah, I guess what I'm saying is it's really going to be more than this for the, the, defines what you're talking about, because we need to bring in the council advisory board too, and, and other players. Get in a chamber of the community that has a stake in this, and ultimately, like with the general plan, they oftentimes will have one big public meeting that sometimes draws three hundred people. And in the past, they have, you know, you and Brock, like, trying to pull things that everybody has, so that kind of do it like. I mean, there's a lot of different things that I've seen with these big planning projects in the past. You know, but I would, I would assume that there's going to be some significant public involvement as well.
I want to move on, Chris, I, I'm sorry, I was never informed about the hundred fifty thousand dollar ticket. The last I heard, it was a thirty to fifty thousand dollar ticket with somebody primarily coordinating activity. And I do recall that you had said a while back that we shouldn't be doing a, a, a project at this scale, because there was some uncertainty about the money, so.
Well, we just want to make sure that we're getting our money's worth, because in my experience, whenever you set the budget up, that's what they're going to respond, right? And so that sometimes, sometimes, you know, you, they're going to give you, a proposal, the same, they couldn't possibly give us the same proposal that they give us with a budget over eighty thousand. So we're really going to have a hundred fifty thousand dollar study that we need to hold there, please provide, I say, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, which is very, very substantial, right? And if there's ever a question, but I think this committee wants to show on the subject better is, you know, how do we manage our competition?
And to be clear, we've always talked about working with the travel council, other elements of the county, other departments that have an impact on this. And, and then people beyond it, so. So we'll step back from that and, I was really, we've, we've got a board that has a lot of energy and perspectives and different expertise. And I was really impressed when Melissa responded to August's distribution of the, of the RFP, it was some very specific things that I thought would be helpful to us. And so I appreciate that she said she could give us some time today, traveling as she is. But it's almost four thirty, so Melissa, if we could do, have you, describe those two things, those two items for the next eight to ten minutes, and then we can have some, discussion about what our next steps will be in the future agenda items. You're muted.
Thanks. I can go really fast, and then if people have questions or whatever they want to discuss in more depth or detail, absolutely, then that leaves more time to do that. The one concern that I do have is that the feedback that I gave was not about the process or about the outcomes or what we're really looking for. I think no matter what we get in the outcome of the process, the, the most important thing is that we get something that we can implement. So hearing Chris's feedback, I'm concerned that at this stage, you might want to go back and have more people give more input into the actual RFP. Because it's quality in, quality out. So whatever it is that we're defining in our RFP that we're putting out there, we're only going to get responses back that are as good, as accurate, as helpful, as what we were able to put out. And it also raises always just the concern with projects like this, that we get something that we can implement, or that we're confident that we have the right people involved or a big enough group involved. That we believe that this is actually something that we're capable of implementing, because number one, we all agree that it's the right thing to do. And number two, we have the resources and the commitment to be able to put things behind that. So I just, I wanted to share that little caveat before talking about the couple of pieces of input that I had for the RFP. So for me, the input that I gave on the RFP was really, really specific to make sure that we're setting the bar to anyone who responds. So that they know exactly what it is that they're responding to, and that we get the best plan and the best buck, and then also, that we get to hold some accountability, so that if we get a plan back and we say, wow, this kind of falls short of what we were expecting or that we wanted, they're always going to, they're going to point back to the RFP and say, but here's what you asked us for, and this is what we delivered on. So my feedback was a couple of things that I had heard from the group prior, just to really get some specificity. And the first one was, is that I had suggested that maybe we put in the RFP, that we would like them to take an A, B, C, D approach to economic development and whatever they give us back. Which is an asset, an asset-based community development approach to economic development. Meaning, it's a totally legitimate approach to say to, you know, a firm or whomever that we work with, we want an economic development plan, and they'll come back and say, okay, and here's how we can attract new business. Here's how we can bring in development from these other types of areas, which is absolutely legitimate. And that's one approach to economic development, but in listening to this group, that's not the approach that I kind of heard everyone would prefer. So if we can be specific, if what we really prefer is an asset-based approach, then let's give them that information at the outset. So when, an example of that might be, hey, listen, we really think that we're good at food things and we want, a commissary kitchen, and we want to be able to put some resources around building out those types of things versus, hey, we would really like to attract, those types of things versus, hey, we would really like to attract a large food and beverage manufacturer to come in and employ our people. So that was one of the things I had suggested. And then the second thing was, instead of saying sustainable tourism, that we switch that to the industry term regenerative tourism. And the reason for that, in, in my perspective, is that sustainable refers only to environment. And it's actually a really low bar. It's basically, hey, listen, let's not degrade this thing more than we already have if we can help it. And it refers only to the environment. Whereas regenerative tourism is, it takes a holistic systemic approach to tourism in general, and it says, we want tourism and that is going to benefit our community and build our community and bring in things, and it involves the economy. It involves individual participation in the economy, it involves environmental factors. But when the group that responds to our RFP sees our RFP, sustainable tourism is a little bit rough, because it only involves that one environmental piece, which is hard to kind of negotiate or navigate in an economic RFP anyway. But then the other side of that is when we look at regenerative tourism, and for everyone to do some research, it might be helpful. If you look for Anna Pollack, she's done a lot of work for the past twenty-ish plus years in communities that are a lot like ours around regenerative tourism, and there's a project called Visit Flanders, which is really, really helpful to look at too. It's one of the large economic development studies that have been done around regenerative tourism. And it just gives us a broader basis with a higher bar for the vendor that we choose to bring in a more holistic systemic approach to that than just environmental sustainability. So that was kind of the two pieces of feedback that I gave.
Okay, so the binding commitment will actually be the contract that we sign with whoever. The RFP's already been noticed and put out there, so it's too late to change the RFP now. But I do need to make a point, and we'll probably be able to integrate those into the contract that we sign with whoever we choose. So really drafting that contract is going to spell out exactly what we're expecting.
Yes, and I should say that Melissa, you know, included that asset-based community development language throughout the RFP. I'm receiving that inputs in there. And then I left it a sustainable tourism for now, because I didn't have a clear understanding of the difference between sustainable and regenerative, and the RFP really is more illustrative, I think, to Chris's point, than a binding terms and conditions. And so in, in the body of the contract and in the kind of quick office hour conversations I've had with the vendors, really being clear about prioritizing the fact that we're really trying to ensure that we have an economy that drives benefits to the community and, you know, realistically addresses the costs associated with those economic choices is all together. So I think that the intent of the comments have been integrated and I think have so far been well received, and I think have been absorbed by the people who I've been talking to, so. I feel good about the, what you're introducing, kind of being a part of the process than your last.
So can we get a definition of regenerative tourism or a reference to something we can go research?
Yeah, we have on that, you have that already.
And what was the name you said was a person reading, what was her name?
So just before we got on, and again, we've been traveling all day, but I did do a quick, so the first definition that comes up when you Google. But there's a whole body of research, and I'm happy to, you know, start a board or, you know, a public board with articles or, but the first definition that comes up is going beyond the concept of sustainable tourism, which focuses on which focuses on neutralizing tourism's negative impact. Regenerative tourism is based on adding a positive impact to the local community and environment. So it's basically, and, and it's a really quick down and dirty formula, right? If you go out and you ask people in a community, hey, how do you feel about tourism? They're going to list off the first few complaints that they have, and then you say, okay, let's stop it tomorrow. Would you want to stop it tomorrow? And then they'll probably tell you, hey, here are the reasons why I don't think that we should stop it or how it does add value. The measure of regenerative tourism is in that space of what they would tell you can be done to improve it. Like, here's how I believe that it would positively impact our community. Here's how I believe it would positively impact me and my family. And it's more of kind of a holistic viewpoint, and that's where regenerative tourism kind of picks up. And the name of the person who's kind of seen as the leader in the regenerative field and all of our people who respond to the RFP, they should be really well-versed in this, because if they're working with any gateway and natural amenity communities, all of these things should be on the forefront for them, so they shouldn't have to research it. But Anna Pollack is a good resource to be able to look at. She's out of the UK. And I think that she's largely seen as, I guess, the pioneer in that field. And one of the projects with regenerative tourism that gets cited a lot is called Visit Flanders. So if you just Google Visit Flanders, it's a community in Brussels who struggles with a lot of those tourism towns of the things that you struggle with, but then how do we use this to our economic advantage? How do we preserve these beautiful assets that we have? And not just sustain them, but also, you know, build around and improve them. So those are a good couple of places to go. But if the people responding to our RFP have worked with gateway communities before, this will not be new to them. They should be able to give us the deep dive.
Ben's laptop died, so let me, let me turn on my audio. I think we can hear you and at least finish up the meeting this way. Forrest, I think if you can speak, my can probably hear you. Yeah, if you speak, the for, the microphone can probably hear you here. From wrapping up these comments, I think my, my thought would be, we're here, and I think we can consider future agenda items and move towards adjournment.
Right. Hi there. We are moving towards adjournment. Melissa, thank you for that and the references to Visit Flanders and Anna Pollack. And what I, what I found interesting was that the definition that you've used for regenerative tourism sounds very much like what Brian was talking about in terms of the civic impact and the ecosystem of our community around and growing tourism. So I think that's a useful thing for us. Also, I'm simplistic. A, B, C, D is something I can remember. And that model, I think, is really one that we can keep in mind. As Chris said, that can be part of the evaluation of contractors. What are you doing there?
Oh, a graph, huh?
So, Melissa, thank you for that, for doing that. You know, we're not operating, I don't know if you and Karen heard, that we're not operating in the commission chambers. So we are dealing with some technology issues. The next item, and so thanks to what the conversation Chris and, and August have had about how we move forward, we're going to set aside for now moving forward a mission and vision conversation, but we will move to the final item on the agenda, which is consideration of future agenda items. And remember that our, our main meeting will be focused on the recommendations for expenditure of the TRT and filling out the rural county grant program. Is there anything else? Other ideas, other comments, questions? Things Karen or Melissa want to add or around the table? Do you want to, Shirley, you want to do a little song and dance about the graph you're working on? Wonderful. Wonderful, right?
Would you send the RFP to Anna Pollack?
I had it, I had it, I had a big list, so they might have been on there, but.
Better send it.
Yeah. Okay, Beegah and Brian, thanks for joining us. Brian, thanks for recalling the meeting that we had. And again, I, I remember the fact that people said, but what's the goal? Let's move forward. And I think Lori asked that question. I know that Karen asked that question at our last meeting, what's the goal? So this is why we need to get moving. Yep. And so Chris is giving us a hundred thousand dollars more than I thought we were going to have. That's great.
Let me go over.
Okay. Anything else on the bill of order? Anything from Karen or Melissa? Okay, do we need a motion to adjourn? So explain yourself, Ben.
Yeah, I'm authorized for resignation. While the computer died, I had to go get that charger. We're talking about resignation. I'm just, just going to try some other things for a little bit. It's been great working with you all. I really appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity. And maybe you'll see me in the future as I write Citizen to Be Heard. Your meeting or someone else's meeting, who knows?
You're finally free to speak your mind freely.
Yeah. I'll liberate.
Ben, thank you very, very much. You did amazing work for this group and for your department. I mean, I, it was amazing how much work you actually produced, so thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Ben. Good luck.
Okay, we are adjourned.